Tim Skoggins, Chair of the Shastbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, February 1, 2021. Tony, you're making noise again. I don't know what it is, but it sounds like that. Tony, can you hear me?
Tony, can you mute?
Tony, you're gonna need to mute. There you go. Okay. First off, I want to make some adjustments to the agenda. After checking for conflict of interest, we need to add approval of minutes and approval of warrants. And then for, as a courtesy to our audience, I'm gonna move, without objection, review of action items before executive session to discuss pending legal issues. And then when we come back from executive session, our only action will be to adjourn. Without objection. Hearing none, we'll move on. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
Oh, no.
No?
No.
All right, no conflicts of interest. Any announcements? I will announce again, we have openings, we have seats coming open, our terms ending is the way I should say it, on Planning Commission and Developmental Review Board. If you'd like to be considered for any of those posts in service of the town, let me or Town Administrator Dave Kirin know by phone or email, and we will put your name in consideration. Also know, and this is the big one, is that town meeting is going to be different this year. Because of COVID, we will not be having in-person town meeting. All the questions that normally get decided by floor vote principally, the date when taxes are due, and the amount of the budget will be decided by Australian ballot. There will be, instead of town meeting in person, there will be a an informational meeting by teleconference like this, run by CAT TV. And that will happen at 3:00 PM on Sunday, February 28th. Yes, February 28th, I believe that's the right date, Sunday before the Tuesday that we vote. And the warning for that will be coming out. It came out a couple of days ago, it's on the website. Okay, are there any public comments? And I skipped right over minutes and and warrants, just like I said I would. We have circulated minutes for our last meeting, that was January 18th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as circulated?
No vote.
By Ken?
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion, addition, or corrections to the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to approving the minutes? Any abstaining? Okay, those minutes are approved, 5-0-0. Warrants, first up, we have payroll warrant number 15. The amount is $26,292.98.
No vote.
Motion to approve from Art, second by Ken. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approving the payroll, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I mean, that's just sounds like a fan or something.
Turn it off.
Yeah, I don't know, it wasn't happening during the water board meeting, but I can't explain it, yeah. Sorry about that, yeah, you're just gonna have to unmute and speak and then mute again, because it's it's got you pegged as the loudest thing in the room. Okay. Where was I? Did I ask, call for the vote? I believe I did, that's why Tony made noise. Okay. 5-4s, no opposed, no abstaining unless I hear otherwise. So payroll warrant number 15, $26,294.98 is approved, 5-0-0. And next I have check warrant number 25. And the total on this is $77,424.53.
No vote.
Motion to approve from Art.
Second.
Second by Joe. Major items on this one include $1,000 for AFLAC, $4,400 for Appalachia Salt, $7,400 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $3,000 to Bennington County Regional Commission, $3,000 to Business Card Services. There's some, that would be the credit card, was there something major there?
Yeah, there's the town clerk's computer that we bought in December, gas detector for the water department, and about $200 in safety gear for the water department. And the rest is miscellaneous Zoom bills and things like that. But the big items is $1,800 for the computer, $670 for the gas detector, and about $200 for various safety equipment for the water department.
Well done.
Okay, $1,000 to CAT TV. $1,900 and $600 to I can't read that, something supply?
Plow blades. I believe it's pronounced chiamong.
Chiamong, okay, plow blades, good. $15,000 to DeFrane Group, which are the engineers working on our water system replacement. GA Bow Fuels for $1,500, $600, $1,200, $1,300. Green Mountain Power, anywhere from $21 to $900. $11,000 to KAS, this was the fall 20 groundwater testing. $1,000 to Southworth, Southworth Milton, Inc. I don't know that one.
That's equipment for the cat.
How much is that?
$1,000.
Oh, $1,000, okay.
Equipment for the which?
The cat.
Cat grader.
Okay, okay. $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for January cemetery mowing, and again, that's prorated, they weren't actually mowing cemeteries in January. And $11,000 and $4,500 to Weyomi Daley.
And that was almost all winter sand. All those little snow events cost a lot of money.
So those are major items, any other discussion on check warrant? 25.
Are we getting all of our sand through Daleys now, or no?
Yeah, pretty much, the winter sand, yes. The road material still comes from up north.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, all in favor of approving the check warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So check warrant 25, $77,424.53 is approved, 5-0-0. All right. So we did announcements. I'll ask again for public comments. And hearing none, I will move on to the treasures report with Melanie Dexter.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Did you get my reports? I sent them out this morning.
I did, and I
Want to pull up the cash flow first.
Well, for some reason it's not wanting to show cash flow. Let me try closing that. I'll just close it and open again and see if it shows up in the list, how about that?
Okay, well, I've got a copy here, I can just wing it if you need me to. There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, um, nothing, I think we've already talked about most of this, the thing on here that I think is hilarious is the civil fines. Did I already mention that last time?
No, $2.50.
Yeah, that's our share of the traffic tickets, they've been, they've been not signed, not writing. Usually that's in the range of $130, $140, so I thought that it's a pretty funny number.
Okay. Make sure we adjust our budget revenue numbers accordingly.
Yeah, I don't think we, we, we're not trying to get rich on traffic tickets, but I think that's pretty funny. Let's see, what else is going on? We talked about a lot of this already, the town appropriations are coming out, that's, that's that's brought our, our cash position to a, our realistic amount that we've got to get through the, the year, and I think I have mentioned this before, last year, that number, you can see the cash balance number there, was much lower last year. And I was, this was when I started freaking out about whether we'd have cash to get us through the end of June. I am not freaking out this year, we're in good shape. Part of that, and I know we've mentioned this before, but part of that is because of sale of equipment, which has given us a nice nice little shot of cash, but it was unbudgeted and it's, you know, it's, it's nice, but it's not something we can expect to happen more than this time. We sold, what was it we sold, Dave? Was that the fire truck or something?
It was a whole bunch of things, including the town garage, it netted about
Well, that's right.
$40,000.
Yeah, had a garage sale.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, we're, we're in pretty good shape, I'm not freaking out this year officially. You can see the delinquent taxes remain on exactly the same path as they were last year, so it looks like we're, as, as far as we can project, I, it looks like we're in having a normal delinquent tax year, as I've said a few times, I was worried about that, but it looks like I didn't need to. If you look down at the bottom, so projecting it to the end of year for, for budget, our revenues are, as you can see, they're actually above 100%, that's because of that, the sale of equipment there, our garage sale and other things. The expenditures are exactly like last year. So that is heartening, there's nothing going on that, in expenditures that we need to be worried about as far as I can say. Of course, we, I say that on the verge of a huge snowstorm, so things could change, but it doesn't look like they will as of right now. If you want to take a look at the reserve funds, if you have that. I think everything that, everything that's happening in the reserve funds, we already talked about, okay, there you go. So you can see all of those, those things that are called in the credit line, that's all the voter-approved transfers to reserves, we talked about that last time. So that's why a lot of the ending balances that were in the negative are no longer negative. I don't have much new to say about that, the only other activity other than the transfers is water that is, if you'll pardon the expression, sort of dribbling in. Those are payments that are very, very late at this point, but we're not charging any penalties. That, the water credits also include the arrears help that the state kicked in, which we have talked about a couple of times. Anybody have any questions about any of that stuff?
I just noticed, I don't know if it's the first time you put a box around it, but interest earns on, on all those columns of, with dollar signs is $40?
Yeah, it's, it's always there.
It's not very much.
I put a, a box around it because that's an input, input cell, so I, all the things that have input cells, I, I box, but yeah, partly that's because the, you can see the starting balance was only $344,000, so most of the interest is generally higher than that, but that was much of the interest was calculated before all of those transfers to reserves happened. It's usually in the, this time of year, it's usually in the area of $80 to $90.
And I can't do the numbers in my head, but that's a fraction of a percent, I assume.
Oh, God, yeah, yeah, interest is terrible.
Yeah. Okay.
It's, it's really because we need to keep this liquid, because so much activity goes on in it, that there's, you know, that's why we, like, we took out all of that money from the, the Lister's reappraisal fund and put it into a, into a CD, just be, which also doesn't earn much, just because it was making so little in this, in this account.
Right, right.
I mean, I could put it all into GameStop if, with, with your approval. Seems to be going up and up.
Probably missed that boat, didn't we?
I think that balloon's gonna pop.
Some people are still putting money into it, it was going up again today, for a while.
No, let's keep it safe, we'll go with Bitcoin.
Well, the Bitcoin's got spanked.
So I think that's all I got, if anybody has any questions?
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Bye. Yeah, have a good night.
All right, that brings up our, our next guest to talk about our hazard mitigation plan, Michael Batchord with BRCRC, welcome.
Well, thanks for having me. Yeah, we actually met on April 6th of 2020 to discuss as we started this whole plan. And since then, you appointed a planning team and we've had six planning team meetings, and we've pretty much completed a first draft, which I think Dave sent to you earlier this week, and it's a lot to absorb, but I can go over it really quickly. Basically, a hazard mitigation plan identifies natural hazards, focuses on things like flooding and storm events and the like, and tries to figure out or identify strategies to reduce their impact. So it's a little bit different than an, an emergency plan, because it's focusing on in many cases, structural things that you can do to, to reduce something from happening as opposed to responding in an emergency. I guess, I guess a good example is in you had a wildfire, your roof could catch on fire if you have the wrong kind of rooftopping, but if you have asphalt shingles, they're generally fireproof, so that's kind of a mitigation. But an emergency would be, you have a lot of fire trucks. So what, what mitigation is trying to do is identify those kinds of things that the town can do to protect itself over the long term, and we, I, we went through a series of natural hazards that are primarily come from the state hazard mitigation plan, and they include flooding and hail and winter storms and drought and earthquakes and hazardous material spills, and, and guess what, infectious diseases too. So, which, which, until now, had never been, had, had actually, even before now, had actually been a fairly significant hazard because of Lyme disease, Lyme disease is so prevalent in Bennington County. And then the plan is, we have to go through and identify past events that, that may have affected Shastbury, which is a little hard, because many of these events affected much wider areas, so to pin down what happened in Shastbury is sometimes a little more of a, a guesstimate. Then we looked at the kinds of programs you have now, you have a town plan, you have bylaws and the like, you have a highway department that's active and then has done a lot of good work. And once we identify your current resources, then we come up with a series of actions, which is really the meat of the plan. And those actions range from implementing some of your stormwater manage, master plan actions to further culvert inventories to putting information on your website that, to help people get prepared or know something's happening, like, like, for instance, drought, so drought is not something you can really do something about, but many people might not even know they're in a drought, so just having information that says you might want to think about how you're using your water at this point, because we are in a drought, and so, because you do have some, some vulnerable populations with shallow wells and the like.
So basically, Michael, you want to inform the public to be a little more proactive.
Exactly, yeah.
The current situations.
Yeah, and, and know where to get help too, I mean, because many people don't. So yeah, there, there's a whole slew of actions, and the next, this, this is a requirement, these plans are, are not a requirement, but they're strongly recommended by the state and by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. They're primarily a way to open the possibility for certain grant funds that you otherwise wouldn't be qualified for, and those grants can be used to implement those kinds of actions. And in some cases, they can be substantial. And I think some of the towns that have hazard mitigation plans have got generator grants, some have rebuilt bridges and roads and things like that, so they can, it can help in terms of funding. It's not required that you do any of these actions, nobody's gonna come and make sure you did it or not. The only thing they may do is if you were to change something radically with your next plan, they might say, well, why was this so important last time and now it's not? And that may be because conditions have changed, and you just need to explain that, so it's, it's not like big, big brothers coming and looking over your shoulder. It's really a kind of a, kind of a open set of possibilities. We do these town, in most of the, most of the country, these are done at the county level, but we don't have county government in Vermont, so each town has to do their own plan, it's really the most, the, the most effective way to do it, so that's the way we do it. What else was I gonna say? So we have these set of actions, and then these plans run for five years, so your plan is getting, has it expired, Dave? I forget, it did expire, didn't it? Yeah.
It expired at the end of this year.
Okay, so now we'll have a new plan for you, and you'll be, you'll be back in, in business. FEMA and Vermont Emergency Management are very obsessed with public process, that's why we've had so many meetings and we've made sure they're, they're publicly, you know, warned and the like. What we, what the normal process now is, with your approval, would be to send the plan out to the surrounding towns for a 30-day review, so Arlington and Bennington all can take a look at it and have it, they have any comments, they'll send them to us. I have never had anybody comment on a plan from another town, other than one town did say to me, gee, can we do one of these? They had never heard of it before, so I, I don't expect a lot of comments, but we need, do need to do that, and when it comes back, if there are any changes, we can go over those. What I usually ask boards boards to do is, if something comes back and it's like a typo or a misspelling or minor changes, just let me do that. Rather than, I can, I'll glad to bring anything back to you who you want, but if you let me make all the minor stuff, then that can save you time. Then, once that's done, we send it to emergency management and they review it, and they determine whether it's acceptable or not. I would also suggest that we're going to send this out to the surrounding towns, that we, we make it prominent on your website, in other words, we kind of make it a headline, so people can look at it and download it and review it. Because, especially now, it's not like we can put things out for people to stop at the town clerk and get, that's really the only way people can, can get this kind of information, so if we could post it on the website, that would be great. I was, I was telling Dave today that I was going through it the other day, and there's a couple of errors that I found that I need to fix in the version I gave you, so if you don't mind me fixing them, they were mostly references that were incorrect and tables that didn't have a source, and mostly stuff that I, I get obsessive about, so if you don't mind me just doing those, then we can, we can send it out, or you could spend more time looking at it, we can have another meeting and talk about it, however you want to proceed. I'm, I'm open for any questions or suggestions you'd like.
Questions for our Michael?
I'm comfortable with making any small changes that he needs to.
I have to confess, I have not looked at the final version of the plan, I was in on some of the meetings, but I would prefer to give it another look and approve it at our next meeting. If we don't find anything that we, that, if I don't find anything that I think needs changing, I'm happy to recommend approval without having Michael come back. Is, is that okay with everybody?
Tell it to me.
Do you want me to make those changes I mentioned and send it to you again, or do you want to just let them pass, because like I said, they're, I don't want to confuse you with too many versions of the same thing, so you tell me I can make them and send it out, just delete what you have, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and make the changes, I'll read that version, and
Okay.
We'll approve it at our next meeting.
That sounds fine.
Were there in the action items, was there anything glaring that, that is really something that is that town should, should react to? You know, you mentioned a couple of things, it sounded like they were, they were, you know, things we could do better in terms of, you know, putting information out there, but is, did you find any, identify any hazards that we are, we, we haven't addressed the way we should?
No, I don't think so, you're pretty, pretty up to, you, you, I mean, your, your road, you have a good road program, there, there are a fair number of culverts, I think, that are need upgrading, but that's a long process, and Mike and Audi will get to that as he, as he gets funding and, and works along, so it's, it's not something you can fix all in one day. Dave, I don't think there was anything that was, that you weren't totally prepared for, or weren't partially prepared for, was there?
No, I don't think there was anything really outstanding. I said, basically, the, what Mike mentioned, some of our larger culverts, but it took us, but we're on year six in replacing the one large culvert up in the hollow, so these things take time to get around to.
Yeah, and you're always trying to get money from the state and, and the like, I mean, these are pretty costly, especially now that the general requirement is to, I mean, generally culverts are required to be much larger to, to deal with the possible flow that the AOT calculates in those streams, so
Yeah.
It used to be a 12-inch culvert, is now a four-foot culvert, and so it's, it's not an easy replacement.
That's right.
All right. Well, thank you, Michael, I'm, I'm gonna ask a favor, if you don't mind, or the next item on our agenda is some issues at the transfer station, and I know you also have a a solid waist hat that you wear for BRCRC, so if you don't mind sticking around in case there's something you can, you can enlighten us on, on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, transfer station issues, we've got several contacts from citizens this week with issues at the transfer station, I was out there and I noticed them myself. We have had a bit of a difficult relationship, in my opinion, with, with Casella in that they haven't been as responsive as, as TAM was to, to issues we have, and the last one out there was the, the recycle bin was practically inaccessible, it was a, a bin that had a, had to be thrown in through a small hatch in the top, there was a ladder like you would find on a, not a ladder, but a step stepping stair thing, it was not very wide, it was two steps, they were metal, they were fairly steep. I had to perform a fairly acrobatic maneuver to get up there, holding my, my bin behind me, and then twist around and throw it into the thing. Some of the older ladies I saw out there were trying to throw their garbage into it from the, from the ground, because they knew they could climb up there and get it. We we also had an issue with an employee who wasn't wearing a mask that we've complained about a couple of times, and had, have had numerous complaints from citizens, not just about the employee, but about other citizens not wearing masks at the, at the station, and it's kind of hard to and, you know, say anything, do any enforcement if that's not being done by the people who are working there, certainly Shelley, the one that we, that works directly for us, she does wear a mask, but the Casella employee doesn't seem to want to do that.
Are they so, are they socially distanced though, Tim? Are they following the CDC guidelines?
Guidelines right now are that everybody Guidelines right now are that everybody wears a mask if there's anybody around. And certainly when he's up there operating the, uh, the compressor, people will walk up to him and, uh, can get within six feet. And, uh, uh, you know, if, if people who are disinclined to wear masks, the other people not wearing masks, it just makes it worse. Uh, we had one lady say that she was inside the, the cardboard container, turned around and someone was in her face without a mask. And when she said something to him, he became, um, abusive practically. And, uh, she got scared, went to her car and locked the door and he followed her over cursing at her because she asked him not essentially to breathe in my face and kill me with COVID. So that's the kind of thing we're having to deal with now. Um, Dave, I know you've been talking to Casella. Um, any reason for, uh, to hope things are going to get better?
Yeah, uh, the new container was a misguided attempt to correct problems with the last container. Uh, I, it was good, done in good faith, but it, it really was worse than the last one. And that ladder thing, which I was surprised wasn't even attached to the container, uh, really was inadequate. Uh, we are having a thirty yard container, side load container delivered from Latham. Uh, hopefully by Thursday to replace that. So that again, you'll be putting it in the side, not the top. Uh, the long range goal that I've discussed with, with, with Casella, let's go back to my original plan for the place where the container for recyclables will be docked next to the compactor. And we will build a little platform where people will just walk up and dump directly into the sides of, of, of the recycling container. Uh, that's the way it's done in a lot of places. Uh, Tam didn't want it done that way here, but this first side one they had was okay, not great. Uh, this next one should help us for the next few months until we can, uh, do it in the spring and build a platform. But that's the only real solution to the, uh, recycling question. Uh, everything else up there is Tam's business. Now, we know Tam is closing their, not Tam, Casella is closing the Scale House across the road. It closed today. Uh, I don't know if they're going to continue under the new contract we're going to negotiate to take all this weighable things like C and D in Shaftesbury. I don't know how they did it in the first place because everything that goes in that container isn't weighed. So we'll see where all that goes. But the main issues we have up there uh, were, is the recycling container, which, uh, I spoke with them this morning after we got the complaint on Friday and then over the weekend. And that'll be replaced as something that works better. Uh, all issues with their employee, uh, they're addressing with their employee. Um, and I hope that's remedied soon. Uh, there was also a question of where was he? Uh, they had built, after I complained that they had to provide a place for him to stay, they built a very nice uh, shed like Shelley's, but they put it behind Shelley's. I had it picked up today. And we put it over next to Shelley's facing outward towards the containers. So his door and his window face out and he'll be able to be found quite easily if he happens to be inside now. On Saturday, there were some complaints. They didn't know where he was, but it, you know, with up there, it was probably close to zero all day long. So if he was in his hut for a little bit, uh, it's kind of hard to fault him. The issues with the gentleman inside the container is, is something unfortunately is going on in lots of places and there's really not much we can do with that. Uh, it's just something we're going to have to try and deal with. But, uh, the employee thing I've made clear and it's, it's, it's all a policy that their employees wear masks too. So this is a would be with, with us, there's procedures to go through and they're working through that to address those issues with their employee there. Just as we address with our employee there. Art, you're muted.
Thank you. Is it, uh, isn't it true that the person that um, was abusive to the, uh, lady was not an employee of the town or of Casella?
Absolutely not. He was just a customer at the state.
Right. And I, I, I just wanted to make it clear that was not a town employee.
No, it was either a town or a cell employee.
Thank you.
Um, since, uh, Tam went out of business, I've, I've been concerned that Casella is now a monopoly in, uh, in trash hauling in the region. Um, and it, that doesn't put us in a good position as we go into negotiate another contract with them. Um, Michael David, Davis told me that, um, it has been at least tossed around at the Solid Waste Alliance level of negotiating a, a countywide contract, uh, with Casella, which seems like that would have a little more leverage than, than Shaftesbury by itself. Is that, is that a serious consideration?
Well, actually, it was a idea of Stu Hurd. Um, to give you guys some background, the towns of Arlington, Dorset, Manchester, Sandgate and Sunderland have a, or had, it's expired. They had a contract with Casella so that their residents could use the Sunderland and the Dorset transfer stations, which are owned by Casella. Otherwise, those towns don't have their own transfer station like you do. They don't even own, have land for a transfer station. So people can go to the, either one of those two trains from those towns goes to transfer stations and uh, dispose of their solid waste. They can get rid of recyclables. They can actually, they actually take computers and fluorescent bulbs and batteries. They actually provide, and clothing, they provide quite a, quite a service. That contract has expired and, um, I'll be honest, it's, it hasn't been exactly a priority for either the towns or Casella to renew that contract. We just keep paying the bills. Um, and Stu suggests Stu's, the Bennington contract is expiring and he has a very different arrangement because um, Bennington owns the land, but Casella has a long-term lease. And so there's a little bit of a difference between that and the other five towns. And so he suggested maybe there'd be a, uh, a kind of countywide contract, because there are other towns like yours, like Pownell and Searsburg and Stanford own their transfer stations, but Casella takes the material for the most part, not all material, but for the most part, they take the solid waste and the recyclables. So that would probably be a really good idea if the towns all got together. Um, and I'm all for it. It's, that basically the issue is, is getting people's attention on it and making it a priority. And that's kind of hard to do. I mean, one of the problems with trash is most people just want to go away. And if it's gone, if it has gone away, they're happy.
Well, if it's not going away, we'll know about it.
Well, that's true. And, and ultimately actually, these guys are responsible to make sure it does go to, go to the right place. Um, so, uh, there are other haulers, Tim. There's, there's and none, none of them are as large as Casella. And Casella owns all the, all the facilities except for those town facilities. Um, but there are other haulers. You could, you could think about having a contract for the, for the facility. You'd, you'd have to talk to the county waste or
Of course, that would probably increase the cost.
It might. You'd have to talk to them and see what, what, how that would work. I, I don't, I, I
I just don't know of any local resources that would do hauling.
Well, that's the problem. There, there's nobody who can, who can actually transport at, at a economical level like Casella can.
Right.
Scale house done in the new contract, we're going to have to pay a higher rate to haul material from our transfer station to one of their waste stations. Does the trucks won't roll the extra six miles for free? Uh, and, and in the short term, what we're looking for is kind of what Mike was hitting at there. We're not going to have a county one in three months. We have to settle a contract by June thirtieth. Um, but there's ways that Pownell runs it or there's ways of having Casella just run it. And I think those are our options. And then because we have this management contract with Tam, but Tam is a whole different thing going on. Casella is not going to be like that. And we had, it's going to take straightening out who's in charge of what there. Uh, if Casella still wants to collect C and D and everything else there, then maybe they should run the whole place. If we're just going to go down to household and recyclables, maybe we run it like Pownell does. It's, uh, there's a lot of different ways of looking at it. If I, if I was Casella, I would want the C and D and everything weighable to go to Sunderland or Bennington. Bennington isn't that far from where we are. And then ju, we would just pay them to remove the household every month. There's, there's a lot of ways to look at this. Um, and, and speaking with, with Killian, who's their representative to the town and Joe, who's, uh, at the Shaftesbury building, uh, we're going to start talking about which direction they want to go in. It, it is going to be different than what we have now. And I'm hoping significantly cheaper than what we have now, because we do pay a very large management contract. Plus we pay to actually have the garbage taken away. So, uh, hoping that, that we can get this sorted out this time around.
One of my concerns, Dave, is that if the cost does go up or if we can't keep it affordable, then typically what happens is people that can't afford to get rid of their trash, they get rid of it. They, it doesn't go to the dump.
Yeah.
It's on the side of a road somewhere.
Last month, the town, uh, paid over six hundred dollars in tipping fees for stuff we picked up off the road. Old dump loads of things.
Wow.
So, uh, no, that, that is, that is a true cost. Right now, like this year, we're going to double our, our pay to throw to two dollars. We postponed it because of COVID. But even doubling it, the transfer station cost the town probably a hundred thousand dollars. That isn't covered. So it's, it's really, this contract has to be a lot more efficient for, for us because we can't afford to raise the rates, uh, because people will do that. It'll just wind up on the side of the road. We'll wind up picking it and then we have to drive it over the scale and pay for it to town directly. Uh, so there's a, there's an incentive for us to keep it workable for those who choose to use it. The majority, we have to think about the majority of people in town who do not use it and try and get them to come up with the best fee schedule we can. Uh, our contract now is very, very big with Tam. And with a whole new system here and trucking it, we were trucking it across the street with Tam. Now it's going to go to Bennington or S, or Sunderland. So that's going to increase the cost. So there's a lot of things to balance off in this new contract.
You may want to think about the kinds of materials you take too. I, I'm not sure you have to take C and D unless you're creating it, but I, I, I know it's convenient for people, but they can take it to Bennington themselves. It's a contractor.
That's one of those that I, I, I would think that from an ownership position of Casella, I would say you're not dumping your truck into a container in, in Shaftesbury that's not weighed. And my tenant is going to go, that's fifteen dollars. I want you to drive over the Scale House. If you go over the Scale House in Sunderland, if it's a pound or up to the next level, it's fifteen dollars minimum. And it goes up from there. So I would think that that's one thing they're going to want to move out. Take the C and D out. And like I said, if it comes down to brush, we take care of and household garbage and recyclables. Uh, we're talking about a whole different fee structure up there, a whole different, uh, look of what can be brought there.
But even, even if you had some minimal charges on some things, it might help. I mean, you, you can charge, uh, I mean, I wouldn't get out of hand, but you could just, for instance, food scraps, you could just charge everybody a dollar for dropping off the food scraps. And it may not be much, but hey, a dollar's a dollar. You can do the same thing for recyclables. See, you can keep it affordable, but gain a little bit of revenue.
Yeah, I know we can charge recyclables and we're currently doing, uh, um, food scraps for free, but food scraps are becoming more expensive for us to take also.
Yeah, they're heavy. So they weigh a lot, yeah.
Yeah, and nothing, nothing is for free. Uh, so our, our expenses keep going up and our fee structures aren't matching our expenses at all.
So I guess getting back to your question, Tim, it sounds like this would, this would be a worth, if we wanted to do something countywide, really the towns and the alliance should do some economic analysis on this in terms of what, what would really work. Um, and that might mean hiring a, a, a company that can, can look at, look at your, what's, what you're getting and what's, what's going out and and whether there are charges you could add that would still be reasonable and what you can and can't take and what you, what you have to take for likely yard degrees. It, it, it may be a, a longer term issue than than just this three-month contract that, or the contract that's due in three months that Dave's talking about. At least it seems to me, you, you need to do a little thinking about. I know the other towns have many of the same problems, whether they want to take, um, bulbs or e-waste or metal and all kinds of stuff, tires. Yeah, it's a lot of, there's a lot of materials that out, out there that can be marketed and go to various places, but it requires doing some work to, um, figure out what those markets are.
And then even our overall system isn't the most efficient because if we had a, a solid waste district uh, countywide, it could be organized, which would have more out with dealing, uh, with larger companies and, and more effective contracts rather than this group and us and Pownell and Bennington all trying to negotiate on the side.
Well, forming a district has been talked about, right?
Yeah, it has, you know, it has the usual opposition because it's actually a standalone government or organization. Uh, I would, you know, it's, many counties have it already. Uh, it's an efficient way of running this. Uh, I forget who just said it a minute ago, Joe or something. Nobody really cares as long as it disappears. But, you know, it, it, it needs to be a way to keep the cost containment on this too. And that's more efficient when you deal on a larger scale.
People do love their transfer stations. It's a real social interaction hub as to the towns. You could probably charge admission for some people.
It's our main campaign spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, we'll, we'll move on. It sounds like, uh, maybe we can get some, uh, um, some relief from, from Casella. It sounds like David's got a good relationship with his contact there. So we'll continue to monitor the situation. Um, you can tell everybody in the county, I'm officially in favor of looking at some sort of county arrangement, uh, uh, in, in waste management. It seems like it, uh, it could be helpful rather than, as you say, everybody trying to negotiate separate contracts.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thanks. You all have a nice night.
Thanks, Mike.
And I'll be glad to come to your next meeting if you want me to. I'll, I'll just put that on my calendar. If you want me there, I can be there. All right.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
I'll make a note to let him know. All right, Dave, you got a DPW report for us?
Uh, yeah, it's snow and it's, uh, the whole report is snow and dealing with snow from small amounts. As I mentioned before, the winter sand bill of some twelve thousand, uh, those little inch and then two-inch snowfalls, they, they rack up a lot of money. Um, total would accumulate it a bit, but, uh, they've had to be out, uh, a lot over the last couple of weeks. And of course, I don't know what it's doing out now or, or anywhere around here, but we're certainly going to get five to seven inches minimum uh, tonight and until tomorrow. So, um, we'll be out doing that. Uh, essentially, yeah, this time of year, it's a lot of, uh, maintenance of the vehicles, keeping the trucks up. And it's been pretty much just snow and sanding the roads for the last couple of weeks.
Yeah. All right. Uh, Da, Dave, uh, that, uh, that bill, that bill for the cat grader, is that complete? Does that, uh, did that fix the hydraulic problem?
I believe it did, or
Okay. You was, you was worried it was going to be more money than that.
I, I think it did. I'll check and make sure tomorrow.
But we definitely need two graders going, uh, workable all the time.
Yeah.
Hey, Dave?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know in case you haven't heard, the, uh, the, the town department has been doing a great job on Cleveland Avenue.
No good. I will let them know.
Oh, yeah, super clean. Yeah.
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else on roads?
No, that's, that's essentially what, what they're doing now is snow.
Okay. Okay, uh, the next item up is, uh, C A I mapping annual contract renewal. This sounds routine.
Yeah, we do this every year. We pay them two thousand dollars, uh, to maintain the G I S mapping system for the town. But the list is used, zoning uses, I use it. Uh, uh, this is the standard contract I sent around. It's the same every year. There's nothing really in it.
Now, we do, uh, we hire them, they, we, we did, we signed a contract with them recently for the web portal, I guess, that's separate from, um, um, the work they do to what, uh, get the, the listing information into the web portal. Is that the distinction?
Yeah, this, this is the basic underlying contract. What, what you're talking about was extra things we had them doing. Uh, and Shelley, they've been very cooperative when there's been some activity through the state also. And, um, as you know, there's a lot of, of layers you can have with this and it was upgrading the layers and, uh, working on that so that they, they mix together, uh, better. I know Shelley was pointing out a number of things. Uh, Shelley's pretty up on her G I S and that. And, uh, she was pointing out a lot of things about it. So, um, basically to make it work better. Uh, I think it is, uh, a better system now and you can go in and find a lot of data.
Now, I don't use it regularly, but when I have and it's been months, um, there was an issue, a longstanding issue with, uh, the, the parcel IDs as they're known by the listers are not the same parcel IDs when you go to the web portal and there's not a, not one formula for translating them. Are we working on that?
Yeah, I'd have to get an update from Shelley. That, uh, when I was back in zoning like eight years ago, uh, when they were first starting this, I was bringing it up to Jim, who was the paid assessor at the time. I'm like, Jim, this thing's dropping numbers. I mean, you know, it's supposed to be oh nine, one, five, five, seven. And it's nine, five, drop another zero. And it's like, you know, how can you find anything if it's not the way it is? And that kept bouncing around. I'll get you an update because I know Shelley was working on it and the listeners were trying to get that resolved. Because that can be quite a headache when you're trying to get somewhere on it. And it never got thoroughly explained to me. But, uh, especially if something begins with a zero, the zero gets dropped off. And that just throws everything, everything.
Right. Yeah, the system doesn't, uh, it, the, the leading zeros seem to matter, uh, or not matter. It wa, it was not easy to, uh, as I recall, to take a parcel ID and translate it into something you could search for on the web portal.
Yeah. And, and to me it seemed inconsistent too. Uh, someone popped right up, some wouldn't, um, uh, yeah, it's not a reasonable way of going about it.
All right, all right. Okay. Well, uh, we'll work on that. But as far as their, uh, their, uh, annual contract in this part, I think it, it involves, uh, getting the lister information into, into the web portal, correct?
Yeah. And, and these, these will be the people who will help to make those adjustments on the numbers. Finding out where that process is because I know we talked about a couple of months ago and Shelley was.
Okay, all right. Okay. Yeah. Is there a motion to renew the annual contract, uh, for, um, uh, parcel mapping with C A, C A I? The, uh, tell me the amount there, Dave.
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
Yes.
For $2,000. Is there a motion?
A move.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion?
How often do we use them?
Sorry?
How often do we use that service?
Uh, almost on a daily basis. Because the upgrade they do, uh, affects everything. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, this is a public facing, uh, system. So anybody who wants to, uh, explore parcel IDs, uh, look at, uh, who owns what, uh, uh, that sort of thing. It, uh, looks at the, the value of stuff. You can all do that, uh, through this web portal that's, uh, linked on our website. So it's a, it's a public service and it does get used regularly.
Very good.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. So the annual contract with, uh, C A I for, um, uh, parcel mapping is renewed for another year for $2,000 by a vote of five zero zero. Okay. Next it says annual Vermont state weight limit road and bridge request.
Yeah, every year, uh, this, where, where I'm required to ask the board if they want to assign, uh, weight restrictions to roads in town because they have to be filed with the state to be official. Uh, so far, the seven consecutive seasons, we've not voted to do that. So, otherwise they're guided by what, what the state says.
Okay. Does anything, what do you think we ought to, uh, put weight restrictions on the roads this year? Dave, do you need a, uh, motion to, uh, in the negative for that or?
Oh, it would probably help to be on file. It would probably help to be on file that, uh, was brought up and, uh, the board voted not to take action.
Okay, uh, is there a motion? Let's see. I guess we'll take an affirmative motion. Is there a motion to take no action regarding, uh, weight limits on roads?
A move.
Moved by Ken.
By Ken.
Second by Joe. So this is agreeing not to do anything. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Okay. Uh, by a vote of five zero zero, we agree uh, for another year not to take action relative to weight limits on roads. Other business? Dave, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Anybody else? Okay. Reviewing action items. Uh, I'm going to look at the hazard mitigation plan and, uh, if I have anything, get to, uh, Michael and also, uh, make sure that, uh, once approved, the final version is up on the website. Uh, I will get back to Michael, let him know if he needs to appear at our next meeting. Uh, we are going to, uh, uh, put on the agenda for the next meeting approval of hazard mitigation plan. And Dave is going to, uh, get us an update on where we stand on fixing parcel IDs on the, on the web portal, the G I S web portal. And I believe that was it. Anything else? Okay. Then at this time, uh, we are looking to go into executive session. I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter. Uh, talking about this legal matter in public would, uh, violate attorney client privilege and, uh, could, uh, jeopardize our position in this legal matter. So is there a? Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We will move into executive session now. Uh, we will not be taking any action, uh, coming out of executive session. So this is for all intents and purposes, the end of the meeting. So, uh, Cat TV and Bennington Banner, we would like you to sign off so we can go into executive session.